Good evening and welcome to the May 17th, 2022 meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV will be conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please stand and identify yourself for the record by stating your name and address. Seeing none, at this time, I would ask that all electronic devices be placed in silent mode. And Councilor Broshman, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. President Zerola.
Here.
Councilor Boishman.
President.
Councilor Kuchier.
Here.
Councilor Cregan.
Here.
Councilor Cruz.
Here.
Councilor Deenatali.
Here.
Councilor Fleming.
Here.
Councilor Green.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Here.
Councilor Squalia.
Present.
Councilor Ian Hazinga.
Here.
We have a full board.
Thank you very much. The public had been advised to contact the Clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. None have been brought to our attention. If there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak on any item on the agenda, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and address and the item on which you wish to speak, and you may speak for no more than two minutes on that subject. Seeing none, we have a report of the Appointments Committee. Councilor Kuchier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Appointments Committee met. We took up three new appointments for full-time student police officers of the Fitchburg Police Department, Dawson Stacy, Ashley Perez, and Audia Rojas, all of which were unanimously approved.
I want you to approve.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion, Councilor Broshman.
I only got one thing to say. I heard the chief talk today. I want to say congratulations to the young three people, and I'm glad they're all from Fitchburg and made my day. Thank you.
And actually, since I already have a motion and second, I'll allow you to address the council after we take the vote. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, it is approved. Chief, would you like to address us and tell us a little bit about these candidates?
I most certainly would. Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Clerk, members of the City Council. This evening, I had the pleasure to introduce these three candidates as your next police officers who will be attending the Student Academy on June 6th. As you've heard me say in the past, recruitment has been difficult in my profession. Somehow, my department keeps attracting quality, quality candidates, and I think it's reflective what you see here this evening. I couldn't be more excited for these young men and women as they start their career in law enforcement. I've been happy to have 35 years in this profession, and I couldn't think of a better profession. It's exciting to see the next generation come around, and I think the city of Fitchburg is poised to have an exceptional police department for decades to come because of the type of candidates that we're attracting, and I couldn't be happier for what was approved this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chief.
Do we have a question for the chairman?
We already voted.
We will now have the swearing-in of the student police officers. I would ask that councilors clear the center of the bench so that we are not in the way of any photographs. I invite family and friends to take as many photographs as you like. We have time.
(inaudible). I solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially and to the best of my knowledge and ability perform and discharge all the duties accompanying the following as a student full-time police officer. Welcome. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure. We now have a report from the Committee on Records. Councilor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The records appear to be in order.
Make a motion when you step.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report of the Committee on Records. All in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous. And we have the budget item coming up later on the agenda. As I think all of you know, we're not actually deliberating or voting on it tonight, but if it's all right with everyone, we'll have the budgets given to us now just to get that out of the way at the top of the hour. No objections? Come on up.
Do we have to take it?
If you don't, you don't get to complain about anything when we deliberate.
Good evening, City Councilors, Mr. President, City Clerk. Please allow me to introduce myself to those at home that they don't know who I am. My name is Natalia Oliver, and I'm the Chief Staff for Mayor DiNatale. I'm here today to present to you the mayor's budget. I will pass along each of you a copy, and if you have any questions or concern, please feel free to make appointment with any department head or the mayor or myself in the upcoming weeks, okay?
Do you want me to help you?
May I ask a question?
I should get two right.
Mr. President? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
When she says make it appointments, do we have to make that appointment through the mayor for the department head, or are we allowed to make it with the department head?
You are allowed to make that.
One is here. One is here. Write up.
Okay. Thank you. For clarifying.
Thank you. Just for the, for anyone listening, since unfortunately, we don't have a traveling mic, I'll just repeat, councilors are allowed to make appointments directly with department heads.
Well, we can. There's no transparency tonight for this budget.
I assume that when you make an appointment with the department head, the department head will inform the mayor that they have an appointment with you.
All right.
Yeah. I mean, if it's easy for you, you are more than welcome to call our office, and we can make that appointment to the department head, whatever works better for you.
Okay. I didn't know if the same protocol applied.
Yeah, regarding the budget, right? So regarding the budget, okay?
Thank you very much.
Of course.
We have communications from His Honor, the mayor, an appointment letter for two special police officers, Officers Leroy M. Jackson and Dean D. Remano, and an appointment letter for Nicholas J. Carbone as a member of the Fitchburg Disability Commission, term to expire June 1st, 2025. Those will be referred to appointments. An amendment to Order 11722, which will be placed on file with the Clerk's office. Report of the Finance Committee. Councilor Deenatali.
Mr. President, there's a very lengthy list here, so I'm just going to touch upon the highlights. Finance Committee met last Wednesday and took up a slew of orders involving transfers, free cash appropriations, and the like. And some of the highlights to note that the committee endorsed, first and foremost, $50,000, 12122, for $50,000 against available funds to community development capital expenses, architectural engineering for designing of a stage at Riverfront Park. This would be an inter-maintenance stage at Riverfront Park to be constructed next year. The recent news from New View Communities in partnership with the mayor's office was they received $200,000 from the Republic Grant Program. This $50,000 will supplement that, as well as an earmark from the State House Budget under Representative Kusmerik. 12222 was endorsed by the committee to spend $150,000 from available funds to community development capital expenses, construction, for the construction of the Oliver Street parking lot. This is where the former fire station was. That parking lot's construction will likely be leased to neighboring redevelopment properties in that area for housing. It would bring a net 19 parking spaces to the city. Let's see here, 12422 and 12522 were endorsed by the committee for $100,000 each, which were transfers from the Reserve for Snow and Ice Removal to streetlights and to traffic signal maintenance. Those were both endorsed. 12622 was endorsed by the committee for $500,000 to be transferred from Reserve for other municipal purposes, capital expenses, and credited to DPW capital expenses, street repair for the purpose of paving industrial road. An industrial road had a paving index of 30 out of 100, very poor condition, 2,500 feet. Curbs and sidewalks will be repaired, not replaced. Heavy traffic there due to game on to the industrial park itself and the residents of Victoria Lane. 12722 was endorsed by the committee to spend $400,000 from available funds for storm water contract services. This is to keep us in compliance with our MS4 federal stormwater permit. 12822 was endorsed by the committee for $460,000 from available funds to DPW capital expenses equipment. This is to replace a slew of DPW vehicles in the fleet that are beyond their service life. 12922 was endorsed by the committee for $196,500 from available funds for parks' capital expenses, parks and playgrounds. These funds are going towards parks' improvements at Moren Field, Coolidge Park, Cogzal Park, and to buy a new lawnmower and bagger for the Parks Department. 13022 was in order for $800,000 from available funds that the committee endorsed for the DPW street repair purpose of paving Clarendon Street. This is from Daniel, this is from Franklin Electric Ave to Daniels, and the sidewalks on both sides will be completely replaced with new curbing and granite concrete sidewalks. Unitil and the wastewater departments will be paying about $300,000 on top of the $800,000, so it's about a $1.1 million effort, and that work should start in July. 13122 was a free cash order that the committee endorsed for $575,000 to the Oak Hill Road Bridge Repair. This is for the design costs for that effort in order to get us into the pipeline for eventual state and federal funding for replacement of that bridge once the design work is complete. And we also approved a slew of orders involving ordinance pay for our non-union employees and for certain union contracts.
Thank you. Before we take a motion on this or any comments, I would like to first request that, because they are ordinances, any motion not include 135 and 13622. Those will need to be voted separately. And also, that anyone wishing to pull any other item, please note that fact prior to a motion being made. That said, I had, did I see Councilor Squalia before? Go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, I just want to quickly say that I really appreciate the allocation of $800,000 to Clarendon, not only the roads, but the sidewalks as well, because they have been in terrible condition, and this will really improve that entire area. And then $500,000 to industrial road, much needed, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Broshman.
I just want to make sure that the record states that 118, 119, and 120, that's a no on Paul Broshman.
The committee report reflects that, I'm sure.
And then the other thing to follow up on, like Councilor Squalia said about Clarendon Street, I just want to let the residents know that the city is going to be enforcing pretty soon. No parking on sidewalks. We're spending too much money to put in new sidewalks, and it's not made for parking cars on, it's for people to walk. So they will be cracking down on that. I just want the public to know, so they will know, because it's costing the city too much money for sidewalks.
All right. Now, is there anyone who would like to pull any item other than 135 and 13622 from the report?
Move to accept the committee report except for 135 and 136.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Now, 13522, amending the table in Chapter 44 of the Fitchburg City Code, is before the council.
Move to accept 13522 and send it to its first reading?
Second.
Or send it to its second reading? Second reading.
First.
Thank you. I have a motion and second. Anyone on the motion? All right. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zerola.
Yes.
Councilor McBoishman.
Yes.
Councilor Kuchier.
Yes.
Councilor Cregan.
Yes.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Deenatali.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Squalia.
Aye.
And Councilor Ian Hazinga.
Yes.
11.
Thank you. That is unanimous. And actually, Councilor Cregan, would you mind turning your video on? It slipped my mind, but that is actually a requirement of the law for remote participation.
Hello.
Thank you very much.
Move to approve 13622.
Second.
Send it to its second reading.
I have a motion and second for 13622. If there, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Aye, absolutely. President Zerola.
Yes.
Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
Councilor Kuchier.
Yes.
Councilor Cregan.
Yes.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Deenatali.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Squalia.
Aye.
And Councilor Ian Hazinga.
Yes.
All right. It is unanimous. Motion carries. We next have 13722, a public hearing for Unitil to petition for a new pole on number 4A on Pritchard Street, approximately 453 feet north of Elm Street and approximately 190 feet south of Oliver Street, as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open. I would like to advise the council that the petitioner has requested a continuance of the public hearing to June 7th, 2022. I would also like to note for the record, unless you're here on that item, that there is no one in the audience looking to speak at this public hearing at this time. Any questions or comments from the councilors regarding the continuation request? Counselor?
It seems like a reasonable request. It looks like they're removing the guy wire from a tree and replacing it with a pole, so it seems fairly cut and dry.
All right. In that case, can I have a motion to continue this hearing to June 7th?
No motion.
I have multiple motions and seconds, all in agreement. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, the hearing is continued. All right. Next, we have Orders Finance. I am going to ask consent to waive the reading of the orders and send them directly to Finance, since there are multiple.
Second.
No need for a motion, thank you, but unanimous consent. If there is no objection, seeing none, we'll send those along. Budget orders, I would like to request a motion for suspension of the rules to refer this to council as a whole. Excuse me, Councilor Deenatali?
Mr. President, I think you skipped over the loan orders.
Oh, I'm sorry. I accidentally merged those in with the finance orders.
Oh, oh.
No, you're correct. You're quite correct. We do have loan orders, 15222, $3,300,000 to pay the cost of demolishing the existing and constructing a new Oak Hill Water Storage Tank and complete miscellaneous repairs and work at the Overlook, Scott, and Fallula Water Storage Tanks, as outlined in the enclosed loan order. This is its first reading, and it will require a two-thirds vote of the council to pass.
Mr. President?
Councilor Broshman.
Mr. President, I got a question. Maybe the Finance Chair can answer this. When I read over this paperwork on the loan, they're also going to take money from their surplus on the meters, so that's basically 300, 400,000, 4 million? Have you had them all in?
You can respond if you have the answer.
Mr. President, Councilor Broshman's question is exactly why I was going to ask that this be sent to Finance, because it's a $600,000 increase over the last presentation we had, and there may be questions of the committee involving the funding sources changing because of the higher amount. So I would feel more comfortable if this were sent to committee first.
Thank you for pointing that out. Actually, I would say that, given that substantial change, which I apologize, I did not immediately pick up on, that this should, by rule, be sent to Finance. May I inquire as to whether the other loan order has also undergone any substantial change?
Mr. President, that's a new loan order?
Okay, that's what I thought.
We have not seen that. We have not seen that one yet. No.
All right. So both of these will stand referred to Finance.
Oh, good. Thank you. Very happy with that move.
Thank you. Thank you, both of you, for catching that. I try to be very diligent, but occasionally, I miss something.
Move for suspension of the rules for 154 through 16322.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules for these to be referred to a committee other than that designated by the rules, specifically council as a whole. This is not a debatable motion, so Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Absolutely. President Zerola.
Yes.
Councilor Boishman.
Yes.
Councilor Kuchier.
Yes.
Councilor Cregan.
Yes.
Councilor Cruz.
Yes.
Councilor Deenatali.
Yes.
Councilor Fleming.
Yes.
Councilor Green.
Yes.
Councilor Schultz.
Yes.
Councilor Squalia.
Aye.
And Councilor Ian Hazinga.
Yes.
And that is unanimous. This will stand referred to council as a whole. We have a few other petitions, which I'm going to whip through quickly. And Cervantes City Treasurer to have the following properties, which I am not going to read off unless anyone wishes them to be. Declared as excess and sent to side yard sales. That will be referred to the City Property Committee, and an excess needs survey will also be undertaken. Councilors Squalia and Cruz for a traffic study to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety at the Twin City Rail Trail Crossing, Bemis Road and Water Street, to determine best solutions for improving safety, for instance, a no turn right on, a no right turn on red on Bemis Road, turning right onto Water Street, and on Water Street, turning right onto Bemis, and/or rectangular rapid flashing beacon. That is sent to the Public Safety Committee. And then three petitions from Comcast for installation of new conduits at Sawyer Passway, 180 Main Street, and another on Main Street. I would like to entertain a motion to refer all of those to public hearing on June 7th. Counselor Green, go ahead.
This had to do with petition 165.
Oh, go ahead.
That it should probably be sent to Public Works first, considering there's going to need to be money allocated for a traffic study before Public Safety makes a determination on what should and could be done.
All right. Any objection? All right. That will stand referred to Public Works, as well as Public Safety, with Public Safety to take it up after Public Works has had a chance to. Any questions or comments on any of those other items or on the public hearings?
Move to send them to a public hearing, 166 through 168.
Second.
On June 7th.
Thank you. I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, all right, they are referred to public hearing. That concludes our agenda items. I have a few announcements. The Fitchburg Community Lions Club has a few meals still available for their barbecue pulled pork dinner. Cost is $7. Cost is $7, dine in or carry out, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. ish at the Senior Center.
When?
4:00 to 6:00 p.m. ish.
The date.
Oh, I'm sorry. It doesn't actually say on here.
Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday, that would be May 19th. May 19th. The Montchuset MLK Coalition, a local nonprofit organization, will present another wrestling with racism event this coming Thursday night, May 19th, from 6:30 to 7:30 on Zoom. MLK Coalition members Oscar Goss and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the event. The topic will be colorism, concept, causes, and consequences. If you want to attend the event, you can get a free ticket for the event by registering at Eventbrite or by contacting Bernie Schultz for the Zoom link. And the Rotary Club of Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh East would like to congratulate the 2022 Award Honorees. From the Police Department, Daniel Belafato; from the Fire Department, Rachel King, Melissa Ahola, and Brenda Fitzgerald; from the DPW, Lynn William Goodwin; from the City of Pittsburgh, Trevor Bonilla; St. Bernard's High School, Jessica Gregorzic, I hope I pronounced that correctly, I apologize if I didn't; from Montchuset Regional Vocational School, Monty Tech, Lauren Sanborn; from Goodrich Academy, Tammy Marana, excuse me, I'm sorry, Marama; from Longsjo Middle School, Michelle Wright; from South Street Elementary, Rebecca Goodlett, Deb Duto, Molly Reed, and Noemi Ferraro; and from Pittsburgh High School, Aria Rivera. That concludes this evening's business.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, Counselor Broshman.
Just like to wish the City Clerk a happy birthday.
Thank you. And happy birthday to our city clerk.
Move to adjourn.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and second to adjourn. If there is no objection, we are adjourned.